Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, we'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woolridge.
She's ill this evening.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Galen.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Let's begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to open call to the public. Call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I do not have any call to the public forums in front of me at this moment. Are there any up with you? Okay, is there any member of the public that would like to speak? And closing call to the public. All right, item six is adjournment to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One. I need a motion, please.
Make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Item A is the discussion and possible authorization to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Penale County and the Town of Florence for billing and collection services for the special assessments within the Anthem Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One. Mr. Joe Jarvis.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This agenda item and also item number eight, A and B, they are the same agreement, but because the community facility districts are separate districts, we need to open and close both of those meetings. So I appreciate your patience in this item. I'll present my information during this section, and I'm available for questions when we get to eight, A and B. CFDs were a new thing for me when I came to the Town of Florence, and so I've been making my way through trying to understand them like my predecessors did. And one of the things that I noticed is that we have some ways that we handle some customers who were the early development stages, and we have some ways that we handle customers who are later development stages. I went and did some further research and discovered that the laws a couple of years ago changed. In the past, the Town of Florence or the district was required to send out the invoices for the special assessments. The law changed, and now the counties can assume those responsibilities. And it is our intent, or staff's recommendation, for the council to consider to allow us to move all of the special assessment invoicing to the county. The main motivations for us to do that are two. The first one being that we want a consistent message. A couple of months ago, I had a chance to go to a presentation at the Sun City Ballroom, where there was a number of residents in that area who had questions about CFDs, and we were presenting on those items. And Councilwoman Wall raised her hand and said, hey, this is how I'm handling, this is how I'm handling my invoice. And some of the other customers looked at her and said, why is she handling it that way? Unbeknownst to her, we were handling invoices with her particular property different because she has an older property than some of the new ones. So I realized that, let's try and get a consistent message. The other reason is, I have been directed by my supervisors to find ways for the finance department to improve its efficiency in how we handle our day-to-day business. And this seemed like an opportunity for us to do that. We'll provide a consistent message and also turn over some aspects of our duties over to another entity that does it very efficiently. It is our intent, if it pleases the district board, to approve this or the council to approve this, that we would work diligently to communicate to those residents who would be impacted by this on our website and also in the newspaper, particularly sending out letters to those individual residents who would be impacted.
All right, thank you for your presentation. So if we understand this correctly, all billing would come from the county with this IGA?
That's correct. So right now, residents who live within the Anthem Merrill Ranch community are actually part of three different secondary property taxing districts, one being the Streetlight Improvement District, another one being for the general obligation bonds. Those general obligation bonds are used to reimburse Pulte for improvements in this particular area. All residents in the area will pay off those general obligation bonds over the life of the term of the bond. The last area that they're part of is the special assessment. Every resident in the Anthem Merrill Ranch area is assessed $3,500 regardless of where their property is located. And every customer, every resident, has an opportunity to pay that off at any time. And if they want to pay it off, they need to come down to Town Hall to pay it off because the county will not be able to process those. Many customers choose not to pay that off, and that is the billing that we're talking about, the billing, the invoicing for those special assessments. Right now, customers, many customers receive their annual property tax bill from the county, and there are three lines, four lines on their property tax bill that have to do with these assessments that I just mentioned.
Okay, just for clarification purposes as well, I do understand that they can pay it off at any time, however, I think there might be a little bit of a mixed message because there's really only two times a year that you could pay it off. They do the calculations through April and then again in...
November.
November.
That is correct. So you can choose to pay it off at any time, but the best times to pay it off is when you have fully paid for all of the interest. We calculate the interest at two times a year. So let's say you come in on November 2nd, you're like, I want to pay my bill. That's great. You're going to have to pay interest all the way until the next billing cycle. And that's the way that we have set them up because we're not in a situation that we can calculate your interest on a daily or an hourly basis. So you are correct, it is most advantageous to pay off the interest at those particular times, but any day of the year, as long as we're open, you can come and pay off the special assessment.
Okay. Now, would we be changing to $34 in the district or changing over to $6 per parcel?
And that's a great question. Right now, every individual is charged $34 a year for the invoices. And those individuals who receive their bill from the county, the town pays the county $6. This proposal will not change how any customer is charged. Customers will still be charged $34 a year, and the county will still charge us $6 a year to handle the processing. And so the customer, what will change for the customer is how they're receiving their invoice.
Okay, I think that was communicated very well. Are there any members of council that has questions regarding this item?
I do. On the first levies, the big levies, did you check with bond counsel on this as far as that goes? Because I did not understand that the law changed to include the first levies.
That's a good question. That was one of the first questions I asked. I reached out to Greenberg Torey and said, this is what I'd like to do, can I legally do this? And they shared with me, let me pull up the Arizona revised statute, 48, Title 48, Section 721, Part B. In that section, it discusses that the county treasurer for the county in which the district is located may enter into agreement for the county treasurer to collect the district's special assessments in the manner by the officers provided by the law for the collection and enforcement of general taxes.
Yes, I understand that, but the very first issues were done before that law went into effect.
And that's a good point.
And in the bond issue itself, it says that the town will bill for them.
And I understand that. As I communicated that, because you are correct, Councilwoman Galen, that's what I understood why we were doing it. But as I visited with them, they said, no, Joe, because of the change in the law, it allows us to bill for those in the past. But I will again check with them tomorrow, and whatever I receive from them, I'm going to share with the council. Because I'm not interested in putting us in a bind.
Right. Okay. And I just want to make a clarification on ad valorem or secondary property taxes versus assessments. The ad valorem tax, which is your tax levy itself on secondary property, that is for regional improvements in the district. The assessments are for the local improvements in each unit that is developed within Pulte. So it's an assessment, not a secondary property tax.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm sorry. There's a lot of material, and I apologize if I misstated it, but I completely agree with what you said because...
It's just confusing to the people that are paying these assessments and the tax levy itself whenever the two items get confused. So we want to make it perfectly clear that they're two different issues.
That's correct. They are. When we go out to the general bond, we do a bond over a large area. When we do the special assessment, the assessment is on a specific area, just by a unit or by, yeah, a small area. Thank you for that clarification.
Councilmember Larson.
I just was wondering if this will impact the customer in any way as far as when their bills will be due?
It will not. Right now, the Town of Florence has some customers who are due two times a year and some customers who are due one time a year. It does not impact them. I visited with Pat Beckwith, who is the deputy county treasurer, I believe is her title, and I said, Pat, this is our situation. She said, no, Joe, this is how we would like to handle it. We will send out an invoice one time of the year, and the customers can choose to pay in the two incremental parts or at one time at the beginning of the year or when they receive their invoice.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wall.
I spoke with Joe a little bit earlier today about this because I'm one of those who may be impacted. And my understanding is that in order to communicate this, a letter will be sent to each of the property owners who would be affected, and it will indicate how the property tax bill will appear, and it will also show the amount if the property owner decides to pay off the assessment.
That's correct. Because I have heard from some customers that they're not aware that they can pay it off. The Town of Florence and the district diligently try and share the same consistent message, but we know that there's turnover in our community. People move in, people move out. Ms. Debbie Freyans answers a lot of questions where there's a lot of confusion when people have, and unfortunately, she's answering the same questions over and over again. And so we want to provide that consistent message.
Are there any other members of council that have any questions or comments? Okay, with that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Penale County for billing and collection services for the special assessments within Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item B is approval of the January 2nd, 2018 Merrill Ranch Community Facility District One special meeting minutes. Does any member of council have any questions regarding those? We need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the January 2nd, 2018 Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District One special meeting minutes. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. And the motion carries. We need a motion for item seven.
Make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion for item eight?
Make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item A is discussion and possible authorization to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Penale County and the Town of Florence for billing and collection services for the special assessments within the Anthem at Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two, Mr. Joe Jarvis.
Mayor and councilmembers, I'm not going to repeat what I said before, it was dull before, so do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay.
All right, with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion to enter into an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with Penale County for the billing and collection services for the special assessments within the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item B is approval of the January 2nd, 2018 Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two special meeting minutes. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the January 2nd, 2018 Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two special meeting minutes. Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Need a motion on number nine?
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. Item 10 is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote. As part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time, the agenda item is called. Item A, I am going to pull from the consent agenda, but I will read it now. It's the authorization for Mayor Tara Walter and Vice Mayor Valerie Woolridge to attend the National League of Cities and Towns Annual Conference in an amount not to exceed $5,400. Item B is approval of accepting the Register of Demands ending December 31st, 2017 in the amount of $1,867,515.83. Does anybody have any other items they would like removed from the consent agenda at this time? With that, we need a motion, please.
Make a motion that we approve item B on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item B on the consent agenda and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Okay, item A, the reason why I wanted it moved was because I wanted to highlight how it ties in with our strategic plan. When we went through our strategic plan, our council decided that we wanted to be involved in our governmental process, not only locally, statewide, but nationally. So the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference, it's going to be held March 8th to March 14th. There is going to be an array of workshops that are beneficial to community leaders. These topics will vary from leadership, finance and budgeting, community and economic development, which is huge for us, diversity in the community, management and public administration, and much more. It will also provide a great opportunity to network with individuals from other regions and share and gather ideas and solutions for issues affecting many communities. So I wanted to sort of pull that off. Now, in addition to Vice Mayor Woolridge and I both attending, either Brent or one of his designees will be also attending. We are going to be bringing back the information that we gain and presenting to council what we have learned. We do have this item budgeted in our, like, there's funds available. And moving forward for next year with our budget committee, I'd like to look at sending three other members in future years. So this way, we all have this opportunity to rotate through, gain the knowledge, bring it back to our town, our community, our fellow council members and staff members, and share that knowledge. Does any member of council have any questions?
Yes, I do. Well, I have an opinion on it, not a question. I just, myself, I think that a national city conference like this, I don't really, myself, I don't think that it would benefit Florence that much to have representatives go back there. We don't have any real legislative agenda that we're trying to push, and that's mostly back there in Washington. That's what they work on and deal with more. I know there's, there'll be a few seminars and stuff that you can learn some stuff from, but I think the money could be better spent here on local promotions of Florence myself at this time. That's all I have to say about it.
Okay. I definitely do feel that there's advantages to attending, and as you mentioned, some of the seminars are not available locally or within our state, as well as if we don't send a delegate to participate in a conference, we may want to consider our overall engagement with their, with their organization. Because as a council, we voted and we pay dues to them, so if we're not going to participate in any of their events, that might be something we need to look at.
Well, I wasn't suggesting that we don't participate in any of their events. I'm just saying, at this time, with the money being tight and we want to help Florence, I think the money could be better spent on some of promoting our events better or helping to produce our events better that will really impact our businesses here more than this conference would. But anyway, that's...
Okay. Are there any members of council that have anything else they'd like to add?
I do have a concern, particularly as it conflicts with our current policies with regard to attendance at seminars and conferences within our area. I think we limit to in-state areas, and I think we allow one conference per year per council member.
You are correct, and that's on there unless approval is granted, which is why it's on the agenda, whereas the other ones had not previously been.
The other reason I'm a little bit concerned is why would we need two of our council members to attend?
So this way, in talking with Lisa and Brent, by being able to separate and engage in as many workshops as possible, we can bring that information and share. So for example, there's, you know, leveraging community assets through public-private partnerships. You also have one of the, Brent and I were talking to, attending, the Effective City Council and City Manager Teamwork, as well as, you know, Safety, Human Health Development 101, Healthy Cities. They all happen at the same time, so being able to separate and go to those sections will allow us to come back, talk about the knowledge gained, how it can be applicable in our, in our town, and how we can bring that back and present it.
Did I understand you correctly, though, that there would be an additional staff person going besides the two people whose expenses are listed here?
So Brent has his own budget where he attends trainings, and I'm going to turn it over at this time to you, Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, Madam Councilmember Wall, that would be my suggestion, is if we do send a contingent, I think, I think it would be important to send a staff person along to make sure that we have our agenda put together, that we're taking notes in the various sessions, that we understand fully the information being provided, and so that we can bring that back and ensure that with the remainder of the council. By no means am I saying that the contingent sent would be unavailable or unable to do that. To the contrary, it would just have as a staff person to provide support and documentation. Sorry, very similar to what we do at the League Conference in Arizona.
So besides the budget that's listed in this description of $5,400, we would have to add another $2,700 to that.
Yes, ma'am.
But that comes out of his budgetary side.
That would come out of admin.
Now, if you prefer, we can also table this and we can wait. I was under the impression when the invitations had come in that council had gone in this direction with our strategic plan in wanting to stay engaged with federal, state, regional, local government and regulatory agencies regarding existing and ever-evolving regulatory requirements. And if that's not the way we want to go, just let us know and we can adapt.
Well, state and regional, is state and regional. This is Washington, DC, and like I say, back there, that's the big time. I mean, that, I don't know that we're going to gain that much from Washington that pertains to us here locally, but...
Now, one of the, one of the other components of this conference is they arrange where you can sit down with your congressman, with your senator, with the national leaders of things that are impacting us. We've had trouble, as you know, we've been getting a face-to-face meeting with Governor Ducey. We've tried to arrange that with his office. We have tried to contact him by phone, by letters, and we always get pushed off. This is going to guarantee a face-to-face sit-down meeting with some of these leaders and some of these issues that are impacting our community.
You're sure that you can meet with a senator or a House of Representatives person?
Ms. Garcia, you...
Usually, you have to have a...
That was in the...
Somebody that's got some pull to get a meeting with those. I mean, if the governor won't meet with you, well, whatever. Anyway, I've said all I need to say.
That's okay. That was in part of the brochure that they had sent out with Congressional Cities.
There was an invitation.
Yes.
That made sure that you can, it's Capitol Hill Advocacy Day, and it's to make sure that you get your invitations in early to make sure that they can plan for the appropriate people to sit down and to meet. So that is part of the page one of the agenda.
I do have a question. Does the National League invite any regional events?
Ms. Garcia, I'm going to allow you to answer that because I am only aware of that one time when you're newly elected, as well as the Arizona League of Cities and Towns trainings that occur once a year. But if there's additional, I'll let you speak to it at this time.
I'm going to do my best, councilmember and mayor. I'm sorry, I'm about to call. I have an allergy problems. This is an annual conference that's held by the National League of Cities. People come from, as you know, all over the country to do that. They do hold from time to time regional events. I went to one of their regional events that was held in Texas outside of Dallas specifically on transportation some years ago that was sponsored by the National League of Cities. In addition, they have different committees on specific topics. And if appointed to one of those committees, they have meetings that are teleconference or video conference throughout the year on specific topics.
All right. If there's no more questions, I will entertain a motion. Okay, my motion is going to be to table this agenda item. Okay, my motion is going to be to table this agenda item.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mayor, the way that it works, that if you just table to an unknown date, it'll come back to the next meeting, is that what you're wanting?
Or it'll table it until it never comes back to another meeting.
Well, it'll just die without a second. It just dies without a second, so it didn't get a second.
Seconded it?
Yes. Your previous motion didn't get a...
I didn't motion anything.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Well, we do have to...
No, we're not. I'm waiting on Cliff. Cliff, can you recap, please?
I believe there was a motion to table that was seconded.
And then it was...
That it would come back to the second meeting, but I only heard three ayes unless I missed something. So maybe we should make sure that we...
Roll call.
Yeah.
This is on tabling?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember, Mayor Walter, you made the motion, so I'm going to start with you.
Aye for tabling.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Galen?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Okay.
Bringing it back at the next meeting.
I didn't state when it was coming back, I just tabled it.
That's automatic Roberts Rules of Order. You either table it to a specific day, or I automatically have to bring it back. Cliff?
It'll, it'll die unless you lose back.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, we're moving on to new business. Our new business for resolution number 1653-18 is discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 41, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents, Mr. Chris Salas.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Mr. Salas is not with us this evening, so you get the replacement killers. And, and they are Christian Collins, from our Development Services Department, who's here to answer any questions, as well as Jared Baxter, representing Pulte, and certainly himself with Baxter Engineering.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Are there any questions that I can answer? This is for, specifically for Unit 40, 41, in Anthem. The property is held by Franklin 643 LLC.
Why don't you give an overview of the item, please?
Background discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
For the people that don't have access to it on TV.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Thanks. It's my first time. Go easy. Franklin 643 LLC requests approval of final plant Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 41, a proposed subdivision located within the AMR Plant Unit Development, otherwise known as a PUD. This area will be part of parkside of the AMR community. There are 55 single-family residential lots proposed for this 15-and-quarter acre subdivision. The resultant density for this particular unit will be 3.6 dwelling units per acre. Should the town council approve the three AMR final plats on this agenda, Units 41, 43, and 45, the resultant overall density for AMR, based on final plat approvals, will be 3.118 dwelling units per acre. The PUD zoning permits an overall family, a single-family residential dwelling of 3.5 dwelling units per acre for the overall AMR development. Neighborhood streets in this unit are designed and constructed with a 42-foot rideaway. That's the current Anthem standard.
Christian, if I might step in, these are the first three units tonight that we've spoke to council about with the, with the larger rideaway accommodation.
Right. A preliminary...
They will also have ADA standard five-foot sidewalks.
Correct. Yes, so it's all been, so this whole section of Anthem is on the west side of Hunt Highway, approximately from Franklin Road all the way south to the sewer treatment plant. Those units were initially designed, the four-foot sidewalks and 40-foot rideaways. Jared Baxter has redesigned the entire subdivision and brought it up to ADA standards, so...
Christian, I misspoke earlier, and I apologize for that as part of your presentation. I said he was representing Pulte. He is not representing Pulte.
643 LLC.
He's, he's representing 643 LLC, so...
He is their design engineer.
To assist those folks watching on, on TV and in the audience this evening, this is one of the parcels that was part of the trade between Pulte and Southwest Value Partners, and Southwest Value Partners subsequently sold this portion of the development on the west side of, of Hunt Highway, specifically for development. Thank you, Christian.
You bet. Thank you. So a no vote would mean that the council rejected the final plat. Yes vote would approve the final plat as recorded by the Pinal County Record.
All right. Are there any members of council that have questions at this time?
Are we going to see construction imminently?
That's unknown. There is some, it's my understanding, there is some basic infrastructure already on the ground.
Yes.
But it's been there for a while. It'll need to be revisited. There's sewer. I don't know how much water distribution is in there. It's not active, hasn't been connected to anything, but there will be grading drainage, specifically in Unit 41. There are no FEMA floodplain issues. In Units 43 and 45, there are units within those, I should say lots within those units, that cannot be built upon until certain grading measures have been taken and submitted to FEMA for a revised LOMAR. That all has to happen in sequence, so...
Councilwoman, it's, it's our understanding from the meetings that we've had, that yes, there's an intent to go in there, grade, do the testing on the, on the utilities that were already installed, and, and make those ready for development.
Brent, did you put a restriction on it in the same manner that you did with Anthem at Merrill Ranch?
Yes. We will be requiring a similar lot hold agreement, that you cannot sell lots once they're established that are in the floodplain until the LOMAR is approved. The letter of map revision for those walking, watching at home.
And I would add, in the general notes on the top page of each one of these units, in Units 43 and 45, you'll see the last note in the general notes stipulates the lot numbers that are going to be under that agreement.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
Now, you had mentioned here about it being this one particular parkside AMR community. However, we also talked about the switching of properties and such. This is going to be consistent with the homes that are already being built in Anthem at Merrill Ranch, as well as part of the HOA?
It will be part of the HOA. It will be able to be served by the amenities that exist. It does have a smaller density than some of the existing units in AMR, but it was, it was set up that way from the master agreement.
Okay.
So, yeah, they won't be building junk? No.
They will be consistent with what's already being built?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it, it needs to stay in within the theme of the Anthem design overall.
Okay. If there are no other questions on this agenda item, I need a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 1653-18, a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 41, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item B is our resolution number 1654-18, which is the discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 43, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents. Chris Salas, speaking on his behalf, is Mr. Brent Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I feel really bad about throwing Christian up here today, but you were very kind. The next two units are very similar to the first. One of the things that Mr. Baxter shared with me that I did not say in my answer specifically to you, Councilwoman Larson, is not only will a design review be conducted by the town for consistency with Anthem at Merrill Ranch, but similar, there's going to be a design review that's actually done through the Design Review Committee at Anthem as part of the construction of the development, or design and construction of the development.
All right. Any questions regarding that item? With that, we need a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 1654-18, resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 43, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item C is resolution number 1655-18, which is the discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 45, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents. Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is very similar to the previous two items.
Okay. Are there any questions? With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 1655-18, a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the final plat for the Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 45, authorizing the execution by the town manager of supporting documents.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item D is discussion approval/disapproval to authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute a paving contract with Viason Corporation for the Florence Gardens Phases Four and Five Paving and Improvements Project, also known as T8 and T9, in an amount not to exceed $1,947,138.71. Before you present, Mr. Billingsley, I went out there this weekend and I let the residents know, this item is on the agenda, that this council had our strategic plan, we listened to the residents and what they had to say, and we brought forward this on this agenda with a project that will be done this fiscal year. So I'd like you to present it. They are very excited and listening in TV land.
You took all my thunder away, and I'm losing my voice to boot. I was, I was going to look towards that camera, because I think it's looking at me right now, and say to the, to the folks in, in, in Five Parks and Florence Gardens in particular, Florence Gardens Phase Four and Five is being approved tonight, and, and we're very excited from the Development Services and Public Works perspective to, to get this project completed. From the time that I stepped in the door in Florence, there was constant contact, I guess is the best way to put it, regarding the need for some improvements in those areas. And consequently, council and staff has worked very hard through a process of, of not only bidding this project, but going through a full design on the drainage and the roadway side, and I really hope that, that the project goes up, goes off without a hitch, and the folks are very excited about the improvements that are about to take place. For any questions, I'll turn it over to Joe, because he ran the procurement process.
All right. I do have a question that you might be able to answer, and it came from the residents. They wanted to know, their number one concern, how are we going to communicate with them about the project in regards to parking and access and things of that nature?
I wish I had an answer for you, but I don't know, because I won't be managing that project. Tell you what, we've been doing a really good job of getting the knows, the news out to, to folks on projects here in the past. Knowing Chris, we will likely have pre-construction meeting, a community meeting before the actual project takes place, like we did on, on several of our projects in the downtown, and, and clearly some of the projects where we've done pavement maintenance. I'm assuming that the contractor will be, have to do, okay, door hangers. Christian says he's ready.
No.
All right, excellent. No, I'm, I'm very glad that we're going to do that, because again, their, their main concern is they just want to know. My suggestion to you would be Saturday mornings, they have their coffees, and they are there every Saturday morning at 8:00. That clubhouse is packed. The residents that attend disseminate the information very effectively by means of in-person, as well as posting it. So I would strongly suggest going out there, communicating in advance with Carol Stowe. She organizes that event, that we're going to be there presenting what we're going to be doing and communicating the plan that way.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, that is, in fact, our intention.
Okay.
This will be a combination effort between town of Florence and also the contractor in soliciting some third-party responses and reviews of their work in other areas. This particular contractor is very effective at community outreach, and they're very proactive in that area. So what I think you'll find is you'll find more communication than they probably want, but in this case, I think, you know, that's better. The contractor is very aware of the scope of the project, and they'll do it in phases so that accessibility to properties will always be available with a minimal amount of blockage. Obviously, when you're placing concrete or asphalt, there's going to be a minimal period where can't step on the stuff or drive over it, but it'll be mitigated to the degree it can be. Again, the contractor has made a real point of going out of their way to, to communicate with local residents, and they have a record and a reputation of being able to pull off these projects in residential areas. They don't do just highway paving, so...
All right.
Any other questions?
Any members of council have any questions?
Yes. Okay, well, I guess my question's for Joe.
Joe.
In the, the package that you gave us, you didn't address multiple bids. I'm assuming that we did have multiple bids. Can you address the bid process?
It was in there.
There, we went through a, the formal procurement process for this particular bid, because the cost of the project exceeded $25,000, which exceeds the town manager's authority. At the close, excuse me, when the bid time closed, we had received 11 bids, and we had reviewed those 11 bids. So yes, we had received multiple bids from multiple quality contractors in the area.
Okay. I guess I missed that.
It says bid tab, page 48, I believe it was.
I would also direct you to the last two pages in your bid pa, in your packet. That shows you the bid tab for this particular project.
That's, my, my concern, Madam Mayor, was I did see the bid tab, but I didn't see that there were multiple bids from different companies that we've selected from.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm glad that you were able to clarify that.
In the future, I will make sure that the wording on the RCA is improved, so you can see that clarification.
On the last page?
On the last page.
All right. If there are no more questions, we need a motion. I'm going to make a motion to authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute a paving contract with Viason Corporation for Florence Gardens Phases Four and Five Paving and Improvement Projects, T8, T9, in an amount not to exceed $1,947,138.71.
Second?
Motion and multiple seconds. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries, Florence Gardens. Can't wait to get a tour on your new roads. All right. Item E, discussion approval/disapproval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between Pinal County, the town of Florence, for sharing the regional mass notification system. Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, next time you go out to Florence Gardens, you should also emphasize that we accelerated Phase Five of that project. It wasn't supposed to happen until the following year. So we're going to do Phase Four this year as promised, and we've accelerated Phase Five to be part of the same bid and, and the same, same contract. So that's good news. This item's good news, too. One of the challenges, quite honestly, that I've had since I've been in Florence is it's very difficult to get information out to, to everyone. I'm used to being in a community that has a couple of different newspapers, that has a radio... a radio station. Sometimes it gets TV coverage, and it's, it's much easier to get emergency information or evacuation information or water break or power outage information. There just aren't as many media outlets in Florence. Radio, I've, I've seen be very effective at past stops. So we had a water line break about a month ago, and there were lots of upset people that called the Town of Florence and multiple people at the Town of Florence who were upset because they did not have water. One of those individuals who was upset came and saw me at Town Hall. His name is Peter Koloris, and I think everybody knows Peter. He owns Mount Athos. And he said, you know, I understand that, that acts of God happen. I understand that water lines break, but it seems that every time a water line breaks in Florence, it's at about 11 o'clock or getting ready for the lunch service. And I said, well, I apologize. In that case, a contractor hit a water line. So it was completely out of our control, what had occurred. But our system is old, and we don't have a lot of ability to shut off or isolate when breaks occur. So Peter said to me, if you want to do something to help the businesses out in Florence, try to find a way that we can get notification out so folks know immediately. He said, I had one of my people check, and before you tell me, yes, you put it on the city's website. Yes, you did a tweet or Facebook post when the break occurred. But a lot of people don't have access to Facebook. Don't go to the city website. And since we don't have a radio station, there's got to be a better mousetrap. There's got to be a way that information can get out. He said, if I would have known at 10:30, we could have taken drums of water or buckets of water and filled them and had the water to wash dishes and what have you over the lunch service. And on that day, I promised Peter that I would work on a solution to this problem. So many thanks go out to our police chief, our fire chief, and certainly to Pinellas County. I had remembered a presentation that we'd received on a, a product called Everbridge about a year and a half ago that the county was looking at. And the county actually went and purchased Everbridge specifically for their emergency notification system. I believe Art Carlton is the one that put that deal together at the county. It was, it was a fantastic experience. We called the county, we asked them if they were utilizing the system, if we could become part of the system. They were actually very excited to bring us on as a, as a partner because they benefit as well. They hope to gain subscribers to the service, and they shared with us a number of things that Everbridge can actually do that they're not currently utilizing. We've come up with a plan. We intend to implement that plan, and we intend to not only market to our folks through our water and wastewater bills, but get as much news out as possible to be able to get the contact information of individuals, including numbers that we can text, email addresses, which we're hoping to get thousands, so that when a situation like a water line break occurs, we can immediately ping and send out a message to folks that they receive immediately. I belong to the service. I think that both the chiefs belong to the service, and so we get notices every once in a while by, by email or text that there's something going on, like the fire in Pecacho. I got a notice on the fire in Pecacho last week. This can be really a neat thing. There's no cost to us at this time. There could be a cost in the future, but right now, the county is, is footing the bill on, on not only the service, but the maintenance and, and the administration of that service. In order to get access to that, I encourage you to approve the intergovernmental agreement before you this evening. Thank you, Peter, as well.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of council that have questions? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between Pinellas County and the Town of Florence for sharing of the regional mass notification system.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. And a motion carries. All right. Town managers report.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, I've got some cool stuff. I always have cool stuff to present during my report, but I got really cool stuff tonight. The first one is I want to introduce our new planning manager, the strange man sitting up front that nobody knows. Sorry, Larry.
We noticed him.
His name is Larry Harmer. Larry is a very experienced planner, economic developer, and planning and zoning director, zoning administrator from, from all around the state of Arizona. I met him when he worked at Apache Junction as the Development Services Director, but he's also been in the public, the private sector. He was with W.C. Scouten more, most recently, who also works with us with regard to our CFDs. They serve as our, our district engineer for our CFDs, specifically Woody Scouten. But he was, he's also been with Prescott, with Tucson, with Glendale, with Flagstaff. You've been around, Larry, but we're happy to have you. He's also a cowboy poet, so we're hoping to get him engaged in next year's home tour as well. You want to say a few words, Larry?
Push it in.
Yes. Push that in. It turns green.
Does that work? Okay. I can say a lot of stuff. I've been accused of being able to talk on any subject I don't know anything about for a minimum of 30 minutes. No, I'm pleased to be here. I, I have worked around the state over the years and been involved in some pretty significant projects. Directly related to Florence, though, I think the historic aspect of the downtown, historic preservation. I used to sit on the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee for the State Parks Board for a while, and I've been involved with historic districts in Prescott, Glendale, and Catlin Court area and various other communities. Also related directly to Florence was getting the development of Anthem and Festival Ranch up and running for the Town of Buckeye back in the day. So I'm very familiar with that particular company and group and, and, you know, how they're in our workings and the CFDs that relate to it and things of that nature. Downtown revitalization projects that I've worked on over the years has to do with downtown Buckeye and all the way back to Tempe Mill Avenue back in the early days. So I'm happy to be here and looking forward to the challenges that you have here and be coming back to you on a regular basis, I hope, with very positive projects.
All right. I did enjoy reading over your resume. I talked with Brent about you. I'm looking forward to working with you because we do have some exciting projects coming up. There's some land developers that are looking to put some housing communities as well as there are some commercial components. So I'm glad that we'll all be working together.
Thank you.
Any other member of council? All right.
You forgot all-around nice guy.
He's letting us to turn.
Well, there's a few developers who might choose to.
And my second announcement, I'm excited. With us tonight, we have Ms. Deanna Husk, if you'd like to come forward. Really neat thing occurred last week, and I only found out about it about three weeks ago, but Deanna was sponsored, or how do you want to put it? Is sponsored the right term? Correct, but didn't you sponsor her for that scholarship? I, I believe Lisa had a part in it, although she's acting coy, but she assisted in the Jane L. Morris Women Leading Government Scholarship for Ms. Husk. And Ms. Husk, to our great pleasure, was able to receive that particular scholarship and was able to attend the Arizona City and County Managers Conference last week in Sedona, Arizona. Really an exciting thing to, to, I know certainly for myself to go to those conferences, I'm sure for Deanna, and I wanted to know what you learned and, and what you were bringing back to Florence.
Madam Mayor and Council, I was honored to be chosen as a recipient of the Jane L. Morris Women Leading Government Scholarship. This scholarship recognizes women in local government and honors Jane L. Morris, the former executive director of the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. This scholarship provided registration to the conference in Sedona, along with an ACMA membership for one year. First of all, I would like to thank Lisa Garcia. Lisa was instrumental in informing me about the scholarship and encouraging me to apply. She possesses a wealth of information and knowledge and embodies the term "women leading government." I also want to thank my boss, Chief Daniel Hughes, and Lieutenant Tryon, who graciously wrote letters of recommendations as part of my scholarship package. I tell everyone that I work for the best boss, and I do. Chief Hughes epitomizes the traits and qualities of a true leader, along with being a mentor and a friend. This opportunity of attending the ACMA conference has piqued my interest in public administration and has lent itself to an educational interest that I plan on pursuing. I was often wondering what I was going to do my doctorate degree in, and now I've chosen it will be public administration. Finally, I am grateful that I work for the Town of Florence, and I hope that as I continue my employment, that I will have the opportunity to grow professionally and personally from the expertise that exists within our organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lisa, Ms. Lisa Garcia, you also accompanied her, correct? So tell us a little about the conference.
That's correct. ACMA.
The conference is a wonderful experience to sit down amongst all the managers within the state and learn about a variety of issues. We went over economic development. I'm, I'm going to meet with Jennifer and Brent and give them a list of toolkit types of options that were provided to us. Some of it we knew, but some of it we may not know just as much about. One of the most interesting things that I did learn was about Jerome and how the city of Jerome, are they a town or a city?
Town.
Town of Jerome decided to take back their own identity by going out, and the municipality actually purchased all of the buildings and then leases it out to bring it back. Another thing that they were telling us about is that the town actually sponsors and owns their event center there, and they rent it out for $400 a weekend. The reason why they do that is because Jerome is always filled with visitors, and Jerome is always filled with tourists spending the night. Some of those are the reasons. So it takes a completely different look at economic development from a small scale of how to create tourism within your community. Those are some of the fun type of things that we learned while we were at the conference.
Thank you. And congratulations, Ms. Husk. I'm glad that you were selected, and maybe one day you will be a Town Manager in Florence. You give a lot to the community, and it's very much appreciated.
The next item I have is we have again been identified as the safest city in Arizona by yet another group. So I think this is the second one, this time this year, and I'm sure there'll be three or four more during the course of the year from different organizations. But congratulations to, to the, to the council, certainly to our public safety organizations for again, being the safest city in Arizona this time. We were followed by Gilbert, Somerton, and San Luis. So congratulations. At last week's Monday evening work session, I was ready to give a manager's report, and I found out there wasn't one on the agenda. So I had some things that I wanted to share with the folks that were in attendance that night that I'd prepared, that I, I think is, is important to share with those folks and TV audiences, as well as those folks here with us today. Number one, I wanted to give an update that not only did we, were we awarded a community development block grant for $270,000, but we're moving forward. As a matter of fact, that project is already designed for what we call our Phase Two project, which will be from Ruggles North, and that's the 12-inch water main loop for fire suppression reasons, as well as economic development. But the first phase of that project, Phase One, I hope that you've noticed, is occurring right now, and that was the bore under State Route 79B, as well as extending the line from water storage tanks to where the new Circle K location is going to be. So that's the Phase One project. It's under construction now, and it's, it's almost complete. The last one is to mention, please don't forget about the water loop that was done in, in cooperation with the health care facility that has increased fire flows for the high school on the north end of town. So that, we often don't talk about the stuff that's underground that nobody can see, but we've made some giant strides in terms of fire protection and, and water system pressures in, in the Town of Florence. Another thing I wanted to provide an update on, because we were talking about it the other day when we were up at Florence Gardens and, and the Five Parks, is we have now installed more than 300 smoke detectors and conducted well over 100 fire inspections in the Town of Florence. That's something we should be very proud of involving our Fire Safe Seniors Program, and we hope to enhance that with some more efforts from, some further efforts that we've committed to up in the Florence Gardens area. As a matter of fact, we have visited over 20 homes in the month of January and installed 29 smoke detectors just in January this year. So very active program, still very much making an impact in the community. And lastly, we've been awarded another grant. Congratulations. On behalf of APS's corporate giving, it's our pleasure to inform you that you have been approved for a $3,500 grant to help with our Boards in Commission Appreciation Dinner and Christmas on Main. So thank you again to, for everybody who participated in that, and thank you to APS. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any members of the council that have any question regarding the board reports?
I just would like to point out, in the court, in our city court, last month, there was 11 criminal traffic citations, which, if I'm not mistaken, that's going 70 miles or, or what is it, 30 miles over the speed limit or? Well, okay. But anyway, we've got some speedsters around here that, that need to slow down. But it's, I mean, I was, I was amazed that there'd be that many people going that fast in our city limits. That's, that's pretty outrageous. But any speedsters out there, slow down because there's kids everywhere. I mean, so anyway, that's all I had to say about it.
All right. And now we'll have our call to the public. Are there any members of the public that have anything they'd like to say at this time? And closing call to the public, call to the council. Councilmember Hawkins.
Well, I'd just like to compliment staff on what a great job they've been doing. I've heard some good things lately, and so I think we're making progress on our relationship with the community. And then I'd like to urge everybody that can, that wants to, or if they have in the past, they'll see some new buildings this year, but the home tour is, should have great weather for it, so hopefully everybody will turn out.
Excellent. Councilmember Galin?
I don't have anything.
Awesome. Councilmember Wall?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I've got a couple of things. One, Jennifer and I attended the IDA this week, and one of the IDA members brought up some interesting points. He was talking about, you know, people get on the IDA under the impression that they're going to do industrial development, and then we tell them, no, we don't do that. But then, you know, Nick had some very good suggestions. He talked about, we have this untapped resource out in Sun City of all these retired executives, businessmen, and so my thinking is, can we set up some kind of, I'll call it a Commerce Development Committee, where we get volunteers and just sit down and talk with these people to see if we can get some ideas about, you know, commercial development in town? And, you know, they have a lot of contacts with the companies that they retired from. Is there ways that we can take advantage of that brain trust that we have out there? Second thing, after our meeting on code enforcement, we talked about we have multiple code enforcers walking around. And I'm wondering, again, can we centralize that into a, you know, some type of central code enforcement? And are we going to enforce code active or are we going to enforce code passive? You know, right now, we wait for people to, to tell on their neighbor, and rather than having somebody, you know, driving our streets to look for, you know, houses that are falling down and things like that. So that's my other suggestion, is that we somehow come up with an active code enforcement program. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
All right. I do have a few things. Partnering off of what you said, I do know that there's a lot of people in our community when you talk about a brain trust, but there's also some excellent resources, you know, downtown, you know, with our business members. We've heard from Pete Koloris early on. Jim Cox has also offered some. heard from Pete Koloris early on. Jim Cox has also offered some unique insights from his experiences that I think are valuable, and we can learn from, as well as, we had a meeting with our five parks, and now in Florence Gardens area, as well as Caliente and Tierra del Sol. I think it would be great if we had a mix of the entire community come together, and share, you know, their knowledge and experience to help grow the community and push it forward. So that's something Brent, I do hope that you move forward with. In visiting this past weekend, I also had some great ideas that were brought forward, because I find that when you go to the people and you say, "We have a problem. This is the problem that was brought forward. The golf course is not being watered. What can we do to solve that problem?" Because when we're looking at how we charge for water, we have to make sure that the system is balancing itself in regards to how it's paid for, with the infrastructure, as well as the water that's coming out. And they shared some great perspectives of, you know, "We have a pool that we empty out." I forget how often they empty it out, but it's a pretty significant-sized pool. And they said, "If we could get, you know, some hose out here," and this is something maybe the fire chief could partner up with the town manager, I don't know the logistics of it, leave that to the experts, "could we somehow get that water to be utilized to water their golf course?" They had some other great, I guess there's some backwash, I wanted to talk to Chris Salas about it, that somehow, like, the streets get flooded with water, and if they could somehow harness that water, and then redistribute it to the golf course, that's another great, you know, opportunity. And if, as a council, again, I'm just going to, for the third time tonight, reference our strategic plan, if we really want to be serious about conserving water, and taking a stance on water conservation, let's start having these conversations of how can we work together to make that positive impact in the community, and conserve our resources. With that, I do hope that everybody takes advantage of coming to our home tour on the 10th. I'll be out in McFarland House. I know that our ambassadors for this are going to be John Anderson and Karen Wall. I did see Karen's costume, and it's pretty awesome. I'm not going to lie, I haven't been successful in finding one, so Erin, you might be...yes, I seriously tried. So I do hope to see everybody out and about. It's going to be an amazing event. We are going to be adjourning for an executive session. We will come back to adjourn after that executive session, so if you're here, feel free to stop by and say hi. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session?
We have a motion in a second by Mr. Hawkins. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. We are going into executive session.